Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. I am Mark Conway, Chair of the Public Safety Committee and Representative of the 4th District. Today, we will have a hearing for Legislative Oversight 22-0030, Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, Councilman Cohen of the 1st District, Councilwoman Porter of the 10th District, and Councilwoman Ramos of the 14th District. Representing the Mayor's Office, I have Tyler Shinella. And representing the Office of the President, I've got Preston Lewis and Dexter Locksley. So we'll jump into it. So LO 22-0030, Legislative Oversight, Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention is for the purpose of the Committee holding regular hearings with the Police Department, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety Engagement, and other agencies to monitor the progress of the city's crime reduction and violence prevention efforts. Before we begin, I want to take a moment of silence and acknowledge 23 years ago, the tragic events of September 11th. I think it's always really important to acknowledge the folks who run first into danger, our first responders, our police department, our fire department and otherwise. And that day was a really, 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 really tragic day for folks across the country and for the country. But it's one that will always sit with me, and I didn't want to miss the opportunity to acknowledge it. So with that, today, we're going to do our regular oversight hearing. We will, of course, discuss regular crime metrics with the Police Department. We'll start there. And then we'll have a broader discussion, being that it is back-to-school time. We're all happy to have our kids back in school, but we want to take the opportunity to talk about safety in and around our schools and make sure that all the efforts to make sure that kids are safe and able to learn and able to get to and from home are being considered. So with that, I'm going to hand over to the Deputy Commissioner, and he'll talk us through the police presentation on crime metrics.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having us. You know, we're always a happy participant of this oversight, and this checks in balance, looking forward to it, realizing that when it does come up, this is our opportunity to not only improve upon what we believe are the metrics that BPD should be held at a standard of, but also knowing that as this collaborative in reference to public safety that BPD is a major part of this and looks forward to any collaboration with our fellow stakeholders in this, in this operation. So, starting with the first slide on significant arrests, we see the comparison in red to the comparison in 2023 in blue. Starting with narcotics violations, it's indicative upon this agency that we understand that many of the violence that is associated and driven by narcotics, drug trafficking organizations, and the geography that officers are continually out there still making arrests. Year-to-date, as you can see, there's 30 more arrests than we had in 2023. What this tells me is that, you know, we understand not only what we're seeing in those specific hotspot neighborhoods, but also that many of the community complaints that are geared around narcotics violations are being heard. Not to say that there is not room for improvement, there always is, but I want to see those metrics to be, if not even more than where we were last year, knowing that this is one of our main crime drivers. When it comes to handgun violations, we are slightly down from 2023. Having an extensive background in firearms interdiction, I will say, you know, for me, while I am not concerned about this number, when we go over our crime counts, we've gone from a Monday, Wednesday, Friday crime call to now our crime call is four days a week at 9:30 in the morning every day except for Thursday, which is CompStat, where we continuously go over our metrics for handgun violations. We realize that the lion's share of our violence is driven by guns, but I will say that this is a lot of targeted enforcement, but there will be some residual effect of, you know, of course, the lower staffing numbers that we have. So some of this is attributed to that, but some of this is also attributed to targeted enforcement in specific areas. We still consistently go over each and every handgun violation to improve upon how we're doing it, and then how the correlation between this handgun arrest, previous arrests for recidivists, and how this individual affects not only the area that they were arrested in, but throughout the city. So there's always a deep dive into where we are. We know from the mayor and the City Council and our constituents-
Deputy Commissioner, can you speak into the microphone?
And the constituents that we serve, we do realize that, you know, looking at our robbery numbers, you know, many of us, many of our citizens are affected by whether it is street-level robberies, commercials, or carjackings. Robbery is a main focus of where BPD is as far as not only our Patrol Division, but our non-P patrol, when we talk about citywide robbery, our citywide enforcement teams, our detectives, this is a main focus of where we need to be, how we need to be deployed in reference to effective mitigation of these robberies that are plaguing the whole city. As far as attempted murders, as you can see, arrests, we are down one from last year, and in reference to murders, we are up 20. This is a collaboration and a focus on our warrant-apprehension task force of prioritizing these warrants. Off the top of my head, I believe we have two open homicide warrants from 2024 and one open homicide warrant from 2023, because it is a focus of our team, making sure that WATF is prioritizing this and putting in the work in reference to getting these individuals and extracting them, not only to be, to be held accountable for their actions, but to give relief and some kind of justice to the family and the victims of these incidents. Next slide, please. As I kind of mentioned earlier, gun-related arrests, as I said, we are slightly down from where we were compared to 2024, 2023. Then the breakdown shows that there is, the lion's share of the arrests are coming from our Patrol Division, which I like to see as the head of our operations unit. You know, normally, sometimes you find the non-P patrol entities are driving your arrest, but there are a host of arrests that are coming from Patrol, meaning that the post-officers, your district action team, and others are being involved in those problematic areas. Although it is slightly down for the Patrol arrests, I will say we are compensating, as you see in the non-P patrol. So when you talk about our gun violence interdiction teams, our GVRS teams, our gun violence reduction strategy, I believe it is working. So it is those non-P patrol entities that are focusing not only on those problematic areas, but also those problematic individuals that are driving our crime. Citywide overview, I think, you know, I can't highlight it enough. When we talk about where we are in the reductions for homicides and shootings, we are on a stellar pace in reference to increasing our decrease, which is always a good thing. When you see those items that are in red, of course, it is something that is hyper-focused for us, where we have weekly crime calls as well as the metrics that are set during our police stat. But I am fairly confident in where we are with these non-fatal shootings and homicide reductions. I will say, please bear with me, but I can jump to another slide of mine real quick. What I normally look at is, I have a, I have a multi-city comparison where I just don't want to see where Baltimore is, I want to see where Baltimore is in comparison to other cities alike. So in reference to the 26-like cities right now, Baltimore is five of 26 in reference to our reduction, which is big across the board. At one point, there were three cities that were still showing positives in reference to homicides. Right now, to my latest report, shows that only Charlotte and Louisville are showing positives in their homicides that they have suffered. Charlotte currently right now is 20%, 21% more incidents than they had last year, and Louisville is plus 7.6%. So Baltimore is in a good pace, not only in reference to the cases that we're having, the incidents, but also, and I will at some point pass it to Lieutenant Colonel Holman, will speak on, we're seeing the correlation between the reductions in the homicides and shootings, but also an increase in the case closures. So that's what I want to see. I don't want to sit back on our laurels and say, just because there are less homicides, then we get to sit back. No. The less homicides gives us the ability to then really do the deep dive and the detective 101 work that gives us this closure rate, and I'm happy to see those things. Next slide, please. Okay. So again, you know, this is just for domestic violence and youth violence, where we're seeing some of the increases, you know, we see the decreases in reference to homicides. There is an increase in the non-fatal shootings that are domestic or youth-related. I will say of those nine cases, my last notes, excuse me, bear with me, panel. So my last notes show of those nine cases, there are six arrests were made in them. Two cases, one from 817 Caroline, which was the same two individuals. This was a familiar case, not really a domestic, where it was a relationship. This was a brother-sister kind of relationship. And then one of the cases from 10 North Conkling Street is being reclassified as not being domestic-related. So I'm satisfied to say that when it comes to our domestic-related cases, we have a 100% closure rate in identifying, either making the arrest or identifying that person of interest where a warrant is obtained. Again, always a concern, as I mentioned earlier, is our robberies. Domestic robberies, robberies from, my expertise turns out to be some kind of altercation between lovers one way or another, or people who are involved in a relationship. And the robbery comes out of normally the intent to find evidence on a cellphone or something like that. It turns into an argument, the argument turns into, give me my phone back, or you're taking my phone to find this evidence on the phone to either reassure you that I'm doing something wrong or something like that, and then the phone is taken, plus the physical interaction that thus turns into a robbery. It is something that we're working diligently with Lieutenant Colonel Holman, Shop, and Family Crimes, as well as our Victim Services Unit in reference to following up with those victims that we can in reference to finding out not only habitual locations, but individuals who are showing precursors that there may be a history of domestic violence that we can intervene on when we can. Going down to auto thefts, again, this was something that was plaguing not only Baltimore, but nationally in reference to the high number of auto thefts. While we are still showing some increases in our auto thefts, we are definitely not where we were in the beginning of the year. I think through our partnership with the Mayor's Office and City Council and other stakeholders, in reference to highlighting various ways of target-hardening vehicles, target-hardening individuals who are involved in the illegal auto theft trade, and implementing certain protocols, like our carjacking protocol, our stolen auto protocol, that as soon as an officer is aware of an incident, that we're putting immediately out the description of that vehicle, and then having the responding officers immediately start to not only look in the concentric area where this car was stolen at, but also units heading to those problematic dump areas, working with Department of DPW in reference to those dump areas and where vehicles are being recovered, having video and other means of, we use in reference to investigative tools to find these individuals who are dropping off these cars and recidivists in that area. So we're having a robust approach in reference to stolen autos, and I think, you know, prayerfully by the end of the year, we'll be in the green with that. Age of arrest, as you can see, you know, this slide kind of speaks for itself. I think it is always a concern in speaking with not only Dr. Brooks, working with our school police and other entities, working with Director Ritter in reference to community engagement, trying to remove, you know, the most vulnerable from, from being arrested. We realize that this is a population that unfortunately for many cities is driving our crime. We just had a meeting, one of our monthly meetings with the State's Attorney's Office about an hour ago, where the topic of the conversation is juveniles and how we deal with juveniles. So we realize, we realize as an agency where we have to be in the forefront of identifying not only from DJS, but all of our partners on those individuals who are showing signs of a child in need of supervision or a child in need of assistance, that we're identifying them as early as possible by any means, either it be from outside entities other than BPD, within the school system, with school police, and other resources that are identifying these individuals and trying to find them and remove them from this negative behavior, this antisocial behavior, that we would prefer them to be on a better path, but we do realize for some individuals, unfortunately, incarceration is the only means into addressing some of these problematic issues. Again, you know, this goes over our arrests as far as juvenile contact for arrestees and age, going up to 16. This is, like I said, the same thing I spoke before, where we just realize that we are finding, you know, unfortunately, more and more individuals at a younger age that are being arrested for some issues that are driving not only our public safety and violence concerns, but also the concerns of the city denizens. You know, we're worried about the victimization of juveniles, but also when the juveniles themselves are becoming the suspects. So we're looking at these crime numbers and how they're driving, and BPD is an avid supporter of trying to find ways of reaching individuals before it gets to this point. But I realize that unfortunately for some individuals, it is not until they have that first contact with us, or that second contact, working with our partners in DJS, working with our partners in the State's Attorney's Office in referencing, in reference to some corrective action, either through the parents or through resources to change this mindset, and hopefully, there's a situation of aging out of these certain crimes. That's it for BPD, and I'll take any questions, and my team will be here for any questions.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. I appreciate you walking us through it all. I'm going to open up to questions before we get into the second half of the meeting. So, so folks, if you have questions, please let me know. I've got a couple of my own, and the first is actually around the clearance rate, the clearance rate. I know you mentioned, and I would agree with you, with closures of cases, clearing of cases. We would hope and expect that with the reduction in shootings and homicides, and even for property crimes, that as we've seen those reduced, we would still see those cases being cleared as much as possible. One, I would love to see going forward, the clearance rate added into the presentation. I think it's just really helpful for us to keep a tune on what's going on. I realize we are always struggling with manpower issues, of course, with detectives, so I know that's something that would be really, really helpful. But if you could tell me, what is, do we have our current clearance rate numbers for, certainly homicide shootings, but I'm also curious about carjackings, carthefts, robberies, and otherwise?
So I'll start, and I'll let Steve correct me if where I'm wrong. I believe the last report that I had, the current homicide clearance rate is 68.1%. The prior year, we were at 34%. So that's a vast increase of where we used to be. I know we're currently above the national average. I am showing for non-fatal shootings, a clearance rate currently of 40.6. Where we were last year is 43%.
Can you repeat that?
We're currently at 40.6 for non-fatal shootings. Last year, we were at 43%. I do not have the, I have this fumble a little bit to get to where we are, the carjacking, but I'll get that back to you, sir.
Okay, yeah, that's really helpful. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, can you just list off those, those ones that you wanted going forward again, please?
I'll make it very easy. Part-one crimes, just the part-one crimes that we keep track of for, I don't know if we have it for all of them or if we keep it for all of them, but I certainly hope we do, the same ones that we capture on the XM report. And so to that effect, I think, yeah, I think one of the other things that, you know, I sort of still hear from folks is this broader sort of perception of safety. Like, I know we are crushing it, we're seeing significant declines, historic declines in violent crime. So first, and I've been doing this for a year now, so I want to congratulate the team for staying on course and getting the work done, and we're doing great work here. I do think that there is a difference, there's some discord on the streets and in neighborhoods with how folks feel about their safety. And the best way that I have maybe tried to put my finger on why people still don't feel that sense of safety is, a lot of times, it's the sort of smaller crimes, maybe not the violence, but the car break-in, the home invasion, the robbery on the street, the sort of violations that maybe don't make it on the 5 o'clock news, but really do kind of change your sense of safety and sense of person when it is violated. So there's that, and then I also think there's an additional component about sort of sense of safety in public spaces, you know. I think there are a number of instances in which we'll see groups of young men on corners that may discourage people from going into shops because they don't feel comfortable walking past those groups of young men. So I'm curious, Deputy Commissioner, you know, how are you guys thinking about those components? How do we close the rift between the reality of safety and the perception of safety? And I guess, you know, there is some reality to some of the quality-of-life problems, but how are you guys thinking about that, and what can we do to close that gap?
So just going back for you, so I was able to pull up a slide. So in reference to the national average for robberies as a whole, the national average is 29%. Currently, right now, the city stands at 25.9%, but this is, this data is a week old, so it may be updated. But what I will say, of that 25%, you have certain districts that are either close to the national average or above. So right now, the Central District is at 27%, Southeast District is at 30%, I'm sorry, the Eastern is at 30%, the Northeastern is at 48%. While others are in the teens, we're trying to balance this out in reference to where we are for our national average. I will say, when it comes to individuals' perception, I think for certain people, the perception is the reality. No matter how much we talk about homicides and shootings being down, unfortunately for most individuals that are, there are individuals who are involved in a specific kind of lifestyle, but when it comes to those things as far as burglaries, or street robberies, or stolen autos, or those quality-of-life things that affect me as just a average Joe, I think that's when the concern is of, I'm not involved in anything, my car was stolen, my house was burglarized, I don't feel safe. That is something as an agency that we take seriously, and we realize that we, while we want to stand on the laurels of my 30 years here, everything has been 300 homicides.
Yeah.
Now that we have addressed that issue and seen a decrease, it has moved. The end zone has moved to something else, and I applaud that, it should. But in doing that, we have to realize that we have to be both and. We have to reduce homicides and shootings and address those other things that affect individual residents of this city. So what I will say is, when we do have the monthly, I mean, the weekly crime calls, when we do have CompStat, a big portion of that, one of the first slides actually, is Director Ritter has with her community engagement. So going out, talking to the community, the neighborhood policing plans of where we are and the perception of law enforcement. I will say for myself, as a deputy commissioner, I'm hands-on with this. So, quick story, and I think y'all know I love my stories. Monday, I was off, but I personally wanted to see, for some reason, Pennsy and Lawrence popped in my ear, because I know it's one of those problematic areas. So in my civilian gear, I went to Pennsylvania and off, I saw a sergeant there, I saw an officer there outside of their car just talking. I started talking to them, one was on overtime for that crime suppression for that area. And my 30 years of experience trying to tell them that, yes, you are here, yes, you are out your car, I appreciate that, but then across the street from you diagonally, there is a group congregating for whatever reason, and you will have to unfortunately follow these individuals. Like, we play this cat and mouse game of squeezing the balloon here, but then the air goes somewhere else, that this is unfortunately what we have to do, but you have to make it uncomfortable, either through confrontations and warnings, informal confrontations, talking to them about... It has to be a conversation that we as law enforcement have to get comfortable with, that, look, my concern from you, not only as a public safety official, but as a guardian of the community, is if you are here at Pennsy and Lawrence, or Penn and North for several hours a day, that's a problem. There is something going on here that is drawing you to this area, right? And I'm not even saying malfeasance, but whatever it is that's bringing you here, you're not being productive one way or the other. So our idea is, how do we improve upon your productivity? If you're a young man, if you're an older man, whatever the situation is, you're one more day, one more year out of the workforce, you're one more year where whatever skills that you have are not as sharp as they used to be, help us help you to get better. And we have something either through our agency, through community engagement, through Monsey, through Moham, we have avenues that we can help you. I think it's about being everything to everybody. I just said recently, you know, I'm a very big proponent in the military with the Three Blocks War. BPD, as many organizations need to be able to be so fluid that we can go from a full-on arrest for something to a humanitarian event, event, to a life-saving event. So we need to be able to be so much of, I can help a kid change a flat tire, I can use Narcan to save somebody's life, and unfortunately, if somebody, for whatever reason, chooses to break the law, then there is a warning process, there's a criminal citation, there are ways that we have to mitigate that, too. And I can be all-encompassing to everybody, where I don't have to be, well, I can only do this. You know, when it comes to Sarah Ritter and her team, what we're trying to push is, no longer are we accepting the neighborhood coordinating officers being the only ambassadors for the community. Every officer has to be that ambassador, and that ambassadorship looks like informal contacts as well as formal contacts. I think BPD is built, and we're changing as an agency today. You know, we met with the international congregation in reference to international law enforcement agencies around the nation are coming to us. I think we have the formula for it, and I think getting the training down to the officers of how to be effective, working, in our State's Attorney's meeting today, we brought up the fact that the officers want the training. How do I better serve in reference to writing these citations? How do I better serve in reference to my case prep? We brought up in reference to what we're seeing as far as an increase in fingerprinting of burglaries, and now our burglary arrest rate and clearance rate is going up. So it is identifying those small things, too. We just not, it's not just about homicides and shootings, but where we are with launching from autos, where we at for BNEs, because those things are personal. If I can't feel safe in my home, in my car, it affects how I feel about this city. I born, raised here, love this city, want it to be a place where we feel comfortable in being able to live, work, play, and thrive. I think we're getting to that point, but we're constantly looking at our methodology, and we're not sitting back saying this has to be it. We're pulling into our partners as, you know, Sarah from her lens, and Dr. Brooks with her lens, and now reaching out to school police for, for increased enforcement and partnership there. I think we're learning as an agency, I'm happy to see where we are, but there are room for improvement, you know. I was able to go to New York for several days to see their CompStat process and how their KPIs and the metrics that they're using, bringing that back here and changing not only our CompStat, but our daily crime calls to focus on the violent crimes, but also those things and questions that we should be asking of our detectives to make them better. You know, it's not about Steve or I asking them, it's about the district commanders and the commanders of those areas, ensuring that the shift commanders and the shift lieutenants and the sergeants are doing their due diligence to hold their people accountable.
So you said a lot there, and I agree with and appreciate a lot of what you said, and I think there's a couple of things I want to pull out of it. You talked about sort of young men sort of hanging on the same corners all the time, predictably. I think there's that. I think there is also, and I don't know what data we- and I don't know what data we can gather, poll, or poll, or have conversations about, but I think there is a perception from some people that experience certain types of crimes, such that the declines that we're seeing are not necessarily affecting those folks. You know, in some neighborhoods, we don't really have so much of a concern about homicides or shootings. And these are some of our, like, middle neighborhoods, generally strong neighborhoods, that when there is a shooting, everyone is very surprised. And then we have neighborhoods where gunfire goes off every night and no one bats an eye. Both are unacceptable, but I think the folks that are having that sort of trouble connecting our declines in crime to their realities at home are the folks in those sort of middle neighborhoods where, you know, everything is fine, but, you know, there's this sense of, I don't know that if, you know, I'm worried someone's gonna steal my car, or I'm worried that someone's gonna break into my house, or, you know, I'm worried in a walk, you know, to said store, that someone might accost me in some way, shape, or form. And so I think, I don't, we need to think about that disconnect and figure out how to get to the seat of that problem, because I think while our crime reductions around homicides, shootings, robberies and otherwise are great from a national perspective and a reputational perspective, I think we have to keep that up for a number of years to really shake some of the reputational issues that we have with the city. The people who are here now, the people who live here and have bought homes here and send their kids to school here and work here and want to stay here are still trying to figure out what their next step will be. Will it be into another home in Baltimore City? Or will it be somewhere in the surrounding areas? And I think that's the piece that I haven't quite put my finger on, and I, you know, you don't have to have an answer today, but I think that's something I do want to resolve for as we think into the future about what our next step is, you know, as we have, you know, we are on pace to have fewer than 200 homicides this year. That is remarkable, truly remarkable, but it's not enough. And I don't say that to, you know, take away from the amazing success that we've had. It's not enough because we want to be more. So I encourage you, and I've had this conversation with the Commissioner, but I want us to think about that piece as we think forward.
I appreciate that, and I will only briefly say, so a big portion of that is transitioning and showing the neighborhood policing plans and giving a voice to the community. So when we do those formal and informal meetings with the community, the early part of my career, the idea was that by putting a police officer on a dot where crime was occurring, my mindset is, I'm going to deal with the situation this way, when the community may be thinking something totally different. So we have to bring what they're thinking into our thought process to show up differently for them. I think one way we show up differently is we realize that not only having cars and officers in static cars, but having them outside of the cars, right, and engaging with the community. So in our productivity database that we look at during our weekly crime calls and at comstat, we're focusing on, in this specific area, how many business checks, how many hours afoot, how many interactions did this officer have, right? I then look differently at that as well. If you're having an issue with violence in this area, is the effective tactics business checks? Yes, you're checking a productivity box to not see you, but how effective is that? If it's not an area that's having issues with commercial robberies or burglaries, that would be my concern. So I'm not also satisfied with just the raw data, but I want to know the quantity, the quality of that data that I'm getting.
Yeah.
I will say, for any community member, I think we really need to push, like, each district has a monthly commander's meeting. It's hybrid, it's in-person and virtual. I think it is that time as well that community members can speak directly to their district commander and whoever else is on that call with them, and to express their concerns. And I believe that way, the district commander can address it in real time. Because I think sometimes when you say it, and then having the district commander say, you know what, I realized this, and this is what I'm doing, or that wasn't on my radar, and I'm doing this. I will say, for the diversity though, sir, in reference to the crime, each district, each post has a weekly crime plan. So what you may see, and I'll just use Central District, I was the major in the Central, is what you're gonna see on 111's posts is different from the response and the mitigation measures you're gonna see on 134, or 123, which was Pennsy and Lawrence when I had it. It's the Western now. But I don't want to see something on 111 posts that's dealing with the inner harbor and tourism and maybe roadway issues. When Pennsy and Lawrence is something totally different. So there's a diversity in that, and that's when it's indicative of the shift commander and the district commander can check them.
Deputy, I want to make sure I get to my colleagues. I know they have tons of questions, and I appreciate your willingness to, you know, take a shot at mine. So I'm gonna start at this end and work across, Councilman Cohen.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Deputy, and kind of pick up where the chairman left off. And I do think it is critically important that we communicate the success we're having about reducing violence in Baltimore. I mean, it is astonishing to be where we are, given where we were two, three years ago. And I think it has implications, that the perception does have real-world implications, sort of to Chairman Conway's point. But also, you know, we want folks to come to our city, to feel safe in our city, to know that, you know, shootings, homicides are down dramatically in Baltimore, and that is to your credit, that's the state's attorney, that's Eric Barron, that's Wes Moore, that's Mayor Scott, that's Monsi over here, that's our school system, that's Mayor Zoff's Children's Families. It is all the different components, and it's our communities saying enough is enough with the violence that's been happening. I think it's all these components working together, and I think that I completely agree with the chairman's point that there's this whole other subcategory of crime that we need to be more aggressive on. But it is, I think, extremely important that we all up here and you all over there communicate constantly that there has been this record reduction in homicides in Baltimore, because that is not something that I think the nation knows yet, and that's not even something that Baltimoreans necessarily know. And so I think there is even more work to be done in how we communicate the reductions that we are seeing and experiencing. And full stop there. That said, was particularly curious about what I saw as a pretty large increase in rape as a category. Rape and robbery seem to be going up. That is concerning. Is there an explanation, or is there an understanding of why we are seeing particularly those increases in both of those categories, but would like to start with sexual crimes and rape?
Yep, I'll defer to Lieutenant Colonel Homan.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, Lieutenant Colonel Homan, Deputy Chief of Detectives. So with regard to the rapes, a little bit of it is numbers-related with the switch from UCR to Nibers, just the way that Nibers counts cases versus the way UCR counts cases. That said, there is an increase in incidents. That said, it's not necessarily a bad thing. Rapes are historically one of the most under-reported crimes. The fact that we are getting more reports is an indication that more people are trusting the system, both BPD, the advocates, the State's Attorney's Office. So, you know, an increase, again, is not bad. We want people to report so it can be investigated. An overall analysis would not indicate that there is any current crime trend, or pattern, or serial offender that would be leading to that increase. It just, it's within, you know, we've kind of looked over the last decade, the ebbs and flows between increases and decreases and reported, and it's all kind of within, you know, that margin. So it's not, you know, any, again, pattern or serial case that's leading to those increases.
I appreciate that, and appreciate the complexity of the data and the numbers, and the story that you're telling about under-reporting and lack of trust. A 24% increase is a lot. And I would just want us to be, you know, very, very careful in how we're talking about it, especially given that part of our consent decree with the Department of Justice was about not treating, not taking crimes of sexual violence seriously enough, not doing right by those victims, and in some cases, officers participating in, you know, horrible crimes themselves. So just want to be really careful when it comes to rape, sexual violence. You know, and I sincerely hope that it is the case that folks feel more comfortable reporting, and that the reporting systems are changing. In regard to robbery, again, seeing an increase there. And to me, again, sort of back to the previous conversation, that is one of those crimes that is deeply unnerving to communities, to people, no matter where it happens. And so what's our thought on why that seems to be up?
I think for myself, so what we realize is, you know, we've developed and had developed a citywide robbery team in reference to identifying patterns, trends, and clusters. I think we do a pretty good job of that. I think we do a good job in identifying sometimes the pattern of one in reference to something that is an outlier of what may be drawing an individual to a specific area, be it victimization, or suspectology, or vehicle used in a crime. I will say that unfortunately, some, some of these robberies are driven by opportunity. There are individuals who are, for whatever reason, it seems as if we identify these robbery patterns and these recidivists, and we start pulling away from extracting these individuals through arrests, working with our partners in the State's Attorney's Office or the AG's office in reference to doing group cases that unfortunately, members on the outskirts that we don't get, people who are now aware of a methodology of trying to affect this crime. We do get some copycats. So I think some of the increases are from copycats, or just individuals that are not the main players of an organization that we've extracted, but they're just the outliers who may have been in the car or aware of. So I think we're very focused on these robberies. Part of our crime call every day, the citywide robbery has its own section where they go over these patterns, how long the case has been active, start to the end of the case. What is the MO? What are the vehicles of interest? Are the vehicles, have they been identified? Have they been recovered yet? What recidivists are we looking at? For those of recidivists that we've identified, are they under arrest? Are they on somebody's radar, looking for not only citywide robbery, but enforcement and other teams through our Mobile Metro Team, through our Regional Auto Theft Task Force, putting those in those specific areas as a force multiplier and trying to address some of these patterns. It is something that, you know, we do not take lightly, because we know that anybody at any time, you know, individuals on a bus stop, individuals that are pumping gas, may be the victim of these crimes. So we're very hyper-focused on this, and I think we're doing a good job in identifying these patterns and bringing them to justice. But I do know that there is a whole host of individuals, either through loose association or just because they're doing some copycats, that is something that we still need to keep on our radar. Because until it is addressed and addressed through enforcement, through corrective action, that it is something that unfortunately will continue to plague our community. But it is something that is definitely on our radar and that we look at every day in reference to where we are, not only with the case closure, but also with our patterns and where we need to be in reference to closing those patterns.
I appreciate that. Yeah, really important category, obviously, to be closely monitoring. Again, appreciate just the focus and the efforts, and I still think we need to communicate more the serious reductions in significant violence that we're seeing. I think it is a lagging indicator in terms of perception. I think, you know, but it's on us to let folks know. And to the chair's point, I think, really honing in on, you know, the state's attorney talks a lot about quality-of-life crimes, and that is what will drive people out of our city. And so still a ton of work to be done to really get a handle on those crimes that are not homicide and shooting. But again, really strong work to get us to this place. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
I think it's on BBD's part to get our messaging out when it comes to the reductions that we're seeing. I know the police commissioner has worked with our PIO in reference to getting that message out. When we make those arrests, we make those handgun violations or problematic arrests, as you saw with the individual that was destroying and taking the speed cameras. That's something that, although it wasn't one of the main issues that we're focusing on, we wanted to get that messaging out, that this arrest, because it is affecting the community. So when we try to highlight those arrests that we can, it is a priority of our Public Information Office to get those out. But we are, we're responsible for our own messaging, and we can definitely improve upon getting that messaging out.
It's on all of us. We got a role in that too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Councilman. I wanted to acknowledge Councilman Glover, who joined us, and I forgot to mention you here, Brother Glover. I want to hand off to Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the slide of the citywide crime overview, I'm sorry if I missed it, but these numbers underneath each column, what is that? Usually, we have it by police district when we look at this chart. By month? No, uh-uh. What is this?
That's the citywide crime overview. So if you see in the...
I'm asking specifically, what are the numbers? One, two, three, four, five, six? Usually, we get this by district, so we can see...
Those are the months of the year.
Months of the year, okay. It doesn't say here, so I, you know, sorry if I missed it. Because I know that we used to get it, you know, district by district, so that was always helpful to see kind of how our districts are doing. So I just was curious about that. Thank you. The other question I had was going back to your answer to Mr. Chair about, you know, we do have the quality-of-life crimes still. And he and I share a boundary. We get a lot of the same complaints about one particular area. But I also have, you know, I have four business districts in my, in my district. All of them, well, two of them, have neighborhood pharmacies. And it seems to me, and I've asked for, in both locations, a multi-agency approach, because frankly, our friends are making a lot of money, because the demand is there. And if we can't get rid of the demand, I don't really know how we're gonna solve this problem. Because I've had a lot of arrests on one of those areas, and it has not helped at all. And so my question is, I think the role since your officers are the ones on the ground, seeing exactly what's happening there, to be able to work with the other resources that are available to us, like at Monsi, like at Homeless Services, we need to do a better job of working with, and my colleague and I were working on this last year, and we'll just keep working on it with crisis response. But we've got to figure out the best way to, I mean, if we take away the shop corner there, it's just gonna move somewhere else, because the demand is so high. And so I guess I'm asking, it shouldn't be coming always from the councilperson to say, hey, we need a multi-agency approach. We need the officers who are on the ground, and you talked about training in your answer, to be able to say, oh, my gosh, we need some other resources here. Let's figure this out. Right? The business checks, fine. You know, the patrolling extra cards, fine. You know, it's a larger problem that we have, that we all need to work together to figure out, and we do not have a solution to this problem. We don't have it. And so I'm not saying, don't arrest. And so I'm not saying, don't arrest, because you should. But we're also saying, like, how do we make sure that the young people are finding something else to do? But the fact is, there's demand for the product, period. And so what are the models out there about how we deal with this? What are the ways that we can support our residents much better? What are the ways that we can make sure that folks get into the treatment that they want? And, you know, we have this opportunity with some of the money that's come in. I mean, this is a big deal. This is all the way citywide. And, you know, obviously, we have residents who want to, you know, arrest them all, arrest them all, arrest them all, and that's fine, but like, it's not going to solve the major problem. So if you can talk a little bit about that, I mean, we just really need your help to look holistically at the issue.
No, I think that is something that we consistently do. I'll pass it to Sarah briefly to, I'll do a disservice if I try to speak on Pivot with the mastery that Sarah has on Pivot. But I will say that we are aware of co-productive policing or enforcement. We have to have it. I think with the resource reduction that Baltimore City and some agencies are seeing, we have to rely on our partners to be multi-disciplined in reference to addressing it on multiple layers. It's not just going to be a BPD one-legged, you know, table. It's got to have these other agencies involved. I would love to say that each and every post officer understand the importance of reaching out to the best resource to get the outcome that they deserve. But I think through Sarah and her team in identifying what neighborhood policing plans look like, and that you have to think of, okay, the businesses, environmental design, all of these things have an impact on why crime is here, and what is the best resource to address it? So we are thinking like that. I know Sarah and her team is actively reaching out to the officers during their roll call in reference to, when you have this problem, don't think of it in a silo as just BPD. We need to look at it co-productively.
I'm not sure what else I can add. The DC did a pretty good job there. I think it's helping officers think differently about what they're seeing. And so we often, my team will come to the district, will sit down with a map and say, okay, where do you see the need for homeless outreach? Where do you see the need for employment outreach? Where do you see the need for housing and vacant buildings? But not just, because that is a large challenge. If we're going to ask police to address that broadly, that's overwhelming. But to say, where do you see this connected with public safety issues? Where do you see this connected with crime? Right? And I think we've talked about this before, with vacant buildings, not just identify all the vacant buildings, but which ones are connected to drug activity? Which ones are connected to homeless issues that we want to have MOHS come out specifically? So it's not just saying, identify all of the issues, but identify the issues and how there's a nexus to criminal activity. One of the activities we're doing to help build that capacity, not only within BPD, but also our city agency partners and our community partners, Councilman Conway, you'll appreciate this, we're bringing the Safe Growth Training back. And so we're going to have two sessions of that, which is a really great program of BPD, city agencies, and community members together, learning about principles of crime prevention through environmental design and other community-based strategies for public safety. And out of that, they'll have projects that they take on together. So we're really excited about that as well.
You had mentioned neighborhood policing plans. My understanding is that there's only like four. Are we expanding that program?
There are three. And so we are looking at ways to take neighborhood policing plans, but scale it in a way that are going to reach more neighborhoods through some of these assessments. So both through the Safe Growth Training and through the assessments, being able to take that concept to other neighborhoods. Because I think one of the lessons we've learned in speaking a bit for Monsey, but in partnership, though if we need to scale them, I think we need to do them in a way that's going to be a little bit more streamlined and adaptable, right? So bringing city agencies to three different meetings to talk about similar things is a lot of their time. And so how can we bring it into one meeting and kind of streamline some of those community concerns through these assessments we're doing at BPD, through the training, and then having one sort of centralized meeting where we're triaging the agency requests is kind of where we're going, so we can get to more neighborhoods. So it might not look exactly like FSO, GBA, and North Ave, but the same concepts of sort of a comprehensive approach with agency and community partners will be there.
So are you going to have specific criteria for where you're going to be expanding, similar to what we had to do with GBRS? Or how's that working?
So that's something that we'll talk through with Monsey. I mean, it's, I think it's more a question of, so University of Baltimore has been our program evaluator for this, and so they've been making recommendations to us, not only on the impact assessment side, but the policy and program assessment side. So as we kind of wrap up these first three, they're going to be making recommendations to us around some of those questions.
Yeah, I wanted to tag along. I think really good to hear that you're bringing Safe Growth back and the crime prevention through environmental design. Something we talked about early on in this committee, I think can be a really useful tool in looking at some of the built infrastructure and design infrastructure and helping us to address crime issues. I want to make a request, and this request will come as no surprise, because I think I've requested it a lot of times over the last couple of years in different capacities. But I would, what I want is a collaborative plan for addressing drug dealing across the city. And this is not solely on the police department. It includes partnership with Monsey, it includes partnership with others. And, you know, I've given some suggestions on what I think we might consider, but I don't have to do the work. So I want to hear what you guys think we should do about drug corners that have been drug corners longer than I've been alive. And it doesn't need to be perfect, but we do need to try something new because it's not working. We know that enforcement alone is not sufficient. So I would, I'm asking for a plan. Can we get that?
Yes, and I assume you mean collaborative, like Monsey, us?
And for that, anyone else who you think...
Housing, got it. Yep, I will, I'm ready to.
I would certainly say, if you think that an early rendition of the plan, including 17 different agencies, is unhelpful and unwieldy, don't start there. You can start with just Monsey if you need to. But what I do want to hear is that we are actively working to resolve the issue outside of just basic police enforcement in the way that we have been doing for the past 30 years. So that's what I want to hear. I want to hear, you know, how are we thinking about this more proactively? You know, one of the things I've suggested is, you know, focusing on certain areas, specifically in areas where we have treatment centers, so that people can get to and from safely. That way, we're making sure that the folks who are trying to get off of drugs can do so safely. You address the supply issue that the councilwoman was talking about, but then we don't try to boil the ocean. But I don't know what the answer is, but I do want to, I want to, you know, let's put our minds together and come up with something that's... Thank you. I'm going to hand off to Councilman Glover. Any questions? Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I want to go back to Councilman Cohen's point about the increase in rape. Can you speak to the protocols that you all use as it relates to identifying, reporting, but also really just processing rape kits in general as it relates to this number?
Sure. Good afternoon. With regard to the rape or safe kits, as you may be aware, the state just implemented a new system for tracking of safe kits. It's not just a BPD thing or Baltimore City. It's statewide. It's actually really cool. Not only do the police and the crime lab, are they able to track it, survivors are actually able to track their own kits. So BPD has implemented that. We are, you know, using that system now. And, you know, essentially, we have a, unless there is an outlier, like 100% test policy, so we test all of the kits that we get. In terms of backlog, there are some backlog with historical cases, but real-time cases, that queue is moving, you know, in a way that's not really creating any kind of delay in getting those tested. Like, our crime lab is really, really good at that. As Councilman Cohen alluded to, the consent decree had a lot of input with regard to how we do the, you know, safe kit testing. So there is a whole protocol built in with our case management system, with the way we review cases, with the way we talk about it at our SART reviews, and interact with the state's attorney's office, and our partners at Mercy who process and run the safe program, that entire process. So, you know, just to give a quick example, like, there are tickler systems within our case management that if, like, we've submitted a kit to evidence control and we haven't submitted the test for that, like, the supervisor will know that and catch that and push that to the detective to make sure after a certain amount of time. And that's built into, again, like, our case reviews and the way that we not only score out the quality of the investigations, but the quality of the case management and our compliance with the consent decree.
Yeah, that answers my question. And a more poignant question would be the percentage of the new caseload versus the old caseload. How much is still outstanding?
You mean in terms of the safe kit backlog? I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I can certainly get that to you.
Okay. And then also, my second question actually has to do with the, I do, as Councilman Cohen, I do believe it's an underreporting. How are you all coordinating with the college campuses in relation to their assaults, their rapes, that are directly on campus that may or may not be reaching you all?
Yeah, so there is, I think most are familiar with Title IX.
I am, yep. That's what I'm asking.
Each of the colleges have a Title IX coordinator that we communicate with regularly about reporting numbers. It's not necessarily a requirement for them to report it to us in all cases. As I'm sure you're aware, there are instances where survivors can file Jane or John Doe reports, where they can get a safe exam without having to involve law enforcement. We track those kits, but we don't initiate an investigation unless the survivor...
Perfect. And so is that number reflected in this number that was presented today?
In terms of, well, no, if it's a Jane or John Doe case, that does not count as like a UCR NIBR case now.
All right.
But we do track those separately, so we know what they are. And essentially, they can request to have that opened up, you know, and depending on the timeframe, either, you know, the hot side will take that or the cold case side.
Sure. So the reason why I asked that question is, you know, to echo Councilman Cohen's concern that this is a general underreporting. And with this confirmation that you just shared, I would like to see more in that respect, connecting with community-based organizations that, you know, have some connection to sexual assault. I want there to be some sort of connection, not only just for processing of the rape kits or just the investigation in general, but providing those wraparound services to these young ladies and young men that may be a victim of sexual assault and rape.
Yes, ma'am. We've had a decades-long relationship with organizations like Turnaround, MCOS, Mercy Safe Program. And recently, within the last year, from Chief Ritter's Division, we've onboarded more advocates in-house. So they're coordinating both with the outside service providers that work with us, and then, you know, our internal advocates to, again, you know, get the message out that, you know, we're here to serve survivors.
Sure. Thank you for that. My second question has to deal with missing persons. I noticed that missing persons are not reflected in the data that's presented today. Why is that?
So missing persons, while it's reported the FBI is not a UCR or NIBR's crime, you know, we can certainly get those missing person numbers to you. The way that we kind of organize that within BPD is there are a portion of cases that are investigated at district level, and then there are CIB, our detective-level cases, much like, I guess the best way to, like shootings versus homicides. There's a homicide unit that does the homicides, and then a shooting team that does the shooting team. And it also intertwines with our human trafficking response.
Yes.
So like, our missing persons detectives are co-located and under the same lieutenant that oversees human trafficking. Many know, that are familiar with that area of work, there's a lot of correlation with runaway kids and trafficking. So, for example, all of our runaways are screened for possible trafficking. And then we work with our partners at the Center for Hope, formerly the Child abuse center, to offer services. Oftentimes, they don't disclose that there's trafficking, but at least we can kind of put that service, you know, to them and their family, you know, whether it ultimately leads to a criminal prosecution or investigation, at least we're getting that service.
Thank you for that. And the reason why I bring that up, when we talk about quality of life crimes, we are seeing an enormous, exorbitant amount of young black kids that are going missing within the Baltimore City, Prince George's, and just communities and states up and down the 95 corridor. And Baltimore being such a, you know, such a great city, we have people and children that are going missing every day, and they deserve an opportunity for proper investigation and proper awareness by all of our city agencies.
Yes. And then the deputy talked about our meeting with the state's attorney's office today. That was one of the topics we talked about, particularly with Baltimore's location, major sports franchises. It's unfortunately a hub for human trafficking. I can tell you from the CIB, the detective side, it's not really a clearance rate because it's, you know, not UCR, but 99% success rate with getting missing persons back, you know, on the CIB side so far year-to-date.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll save my questions for the next round.
Thank you. Great questions. I realize for the request that I had with the plan for drug dealing, I didn't give a date. How much time do you guys need? You tell me. I don't, you know...
I guess I'd have to also coordinate with Monsey. I don't know that I can give you a specific answer. I mean, what timeline are you thinking of? I mean, obviously, we talk to Monsey all the time, but since we're going to be talking to a bunch of other agencies, we can coordinate through MOGR. I mean, I think a month is probably sufficient.
All right, let's do a month.
If we need additional time, we can always come back and ask you, but I feel like that is probably reasonable.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Yeah, thank you. And then last piece, I would like to sit down, if we can coordinate some time to go through the slideshow and think about some tweaks and changes to the data, how it's presented and what we have here. That'd be helpful, I think, to the hearing.
And I believe for Councilman Ramos, I think that though we stopped the district slide when the map changed, but I think that we can, that's why we changed that. So obviously, I can always get you your district information, but we stopped that because it wouldn't have been accurate, because the district boundaries changed.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you. Any further questions on BPD's presentation or any general crime-related issues?
I did have one, sir.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. This question has to do with open-air drug use within our parks. What is the protocol with park rangers that you all are developing for this issue? We're noticing it not only in my district in Carroll Park, but we're noticing it down in some of the parks in Lakeland and also in Westport as well. Can you all speak to that protocol that's being developed and when you're going to actually implement it?
We're still in the planning stages of that. I do know that specific districts with parks have been utilizing the rangers. I do know the rangers have hours that are slightly different from ours, so that's the biggest issue of trying to coordinate resources and overlap. So we're still in the process of that, and I couldn't give you a formalized where we need to be, but this is something that we're consistently having conversations with. But we do know that the rangers have slightly different hours. We're also thinking about how we can utilize them when there are weekends and events, but that's where some of the issues come up with their staffing.
Sure. Is there an opportunity for park rangers to have enforcement capabilities?
I'm not sure of their capabilities for that, no. I would have to look into that.
Had their, so I'm curious if there have been conversations around that, because, you know, I've been having meetings with BCRP and BPD, particularly in the Southern District, and we've been talking about how park rangers, they need that enforcement capability because police officers are not necessarily able to come to the park when needed. So have you all ever discussed that?
So I know that we're utilizing them in reference to supplementing a co-production in reference to how we appear in those places, but I will pass it to my partner. in reference to how we appear in those places, but I will pass it to my partner here as a life ring.
Sure.
That will speak to the park rangers and what exactly their capabilities are.
Sure. Thank you.
Good afternoon, all. My name is Dorsey Skinner. I'm chief of safety, security, and risk management for Baltimore City Recreation and Parks. The park rangers fall underneath of my umbrella. And as of right now, the park rangers do not have enforcement powers. We are working with Baltimore City Police and other agencies, including the Sheriff's Department, to get them enforcement powers and to see what that protocol and actually that structure will look like. We do have four park rangers right now that circle the entire city and all the parks, and we are hoping to increase that number year over year.
Do we have a timeline when that discussion will be completed?
No, ma'am, we do not have a timeline.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, Councilman Cohen?
Just to pick up on my colleague's line of questioning, I feel like there's been multiple iterations of park rangers, and we've talked about it for a long time, and this question of enforcement is critically important. I don't, I forget, because we were talking about it for a long time, about Patterson Park, and I forget exactly where it landed, but I think to not have park rangers have enforcement power is, really neuters their ability to enforce the law. And so I would love to see a timeline and steps to get them enforcement power. I forget if it's, there needs to be state authorization or how that works, but, I mean, don't get me wrong, it's it's great to have folks there as ambassadors, folks engaging with, you know, people using the park, but I think to Councilmember Porter's point, when we have open-air drug dealing happening, even things like off-leash dogs, just upholding the safety of our parks is really, really important. And it's sort of like, we're either going to invest in this park ranger program or we're not, but I think to just kind of half-do it and half-not do it doesn't really work for anyone and ends up causing increased frustration. So I would love to see steps to get them enforcement and a timeline on that as well.
And then, Mr. Chair, if I may, what, just a question, just to be able to take back to the executive team, what exactly, when you, when you use the term enforcement action, what actions are you saying that they should be able to take? And also, I think, understanding the nuances that come with that, in that if we are asking them to then start taking this enforcement, asking, are we now talking about having armed park rangers and arrest abilities? Like, what, what does that look like to you? Just for me to be able to take back.
Yeah, minimally the ability to write a citation and contribute to a citation program, and then I think a conversation about arrests should be on the table.
And also, to add to that conversation, not only just writing citations, but they having arrests, but I would garner to say that some of our park rangers actually have public safety experience, they're former officers, so they they understand how and what should be done as relates to being armed, what the proper procedures are in relation to BPD. So for me, it is, it is all of that, citation all the way through to arrest. In support, yep, in support of, in support for BPD.
So can we get a timeline? See, it sounds like we.
Let me, let me have a conversation with the the city administrator. I'm not really comfortable communicating a timeline now, right? Because again, that's, that's a lot of nuance there. There could be a need to look at some state legislation if we were to go that route. So I'd say at the bare minimum, let me try to have a conversation with her this week, and maybe by the end of the week, I can get back to you with a meeting to maybe discuss what it could look like going forward.
So by the end of the week, at the very least.
We can send over some dates to meet with the city administrator and Mr. Skinner to talk about in a little bit more detail.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Is that sufficient? Okay, thank you. All right. On that note, we're gonna transition to the second half of our meeting, if, unless anyone has any reservations. Important, if only because parks are really important opportunities for our young people, safe places for our young people, but I think I want to get into a conversation about safety in and around schools, to and from schools for our young, young folks. And so we've got some presentations, presentations today from Dr. Brooks and Director Mefronis, who are gonna walk us through some of the programs that we're currently implementing. So I'm gonna hand off to Dr. Brooks of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success.
Good afternoon and thank you, Chair. Again, Dr. Brooks, Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and I have with me two staff members. I'll allow them to introduce themselves, and then I'll start the presentation.
Good afternoon, RO's House Chief of Policy and Partnerships at MOCFS.
Afternoon. Janelle Penny, Chief of Staff at MOCFS. Next slide, please. So, good afternoon. Mayor Scott's expectation is that all city agencies support the work around youth safety and engagement. And with that, beginning in May of 2023, Safe Passage was launched by Mayor Scott as a pilot to really increase student safety as they travel to and from school. And so, again, it started as a pilot, and it was operated in partnership with multiple city agencies, to include MOCFS, Monti, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, also to include MOKA, which was formerly the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood, as well as Moane, and in partnership with city schools, the Capitol Police, Mondomin Management, and MTA Police. And really, the focus at that time was really around State Center and Mondomin, because there was an uptick of those two bus hubs of activities with young people engaging in fights or just large gatherings. And so from there, we began to have deeper conversations with MTA, school police, and BPD to really look at that window of the two hours after school, to see how we could expand from just those two bus hubs to across walking spaces for young people as they traveled from school. And so each day, from the window of 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., which is a little bit before dismissal as well as time after dismissal, to really work with community partners who would meet in designated zones to be able to monitor that traffic as students moved from school to home, and had the partners really be proactive. So it was really about, it's really about being proactive to maintain peace and safety for our young people, but also for our communities as well, as they engage with students, to offer them resources and support. And it's really, again, about engagement of our young people as well as community members. And so during the school year of 23, 24, BPD, city schools, most, most importantly, city schools, police, and MOCFS came together to collect data, to include quantitative and qualitative data. And that quantitative data was really looking at some of the data that DC Jones talked about. When we looked at aggravated assaults, we looked at robberies, but we looked at it in a two-mile radius of specific schools where we were seeing an uptick around that 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And then the qualitative data is some ride-alongs that Major Coleman and I, I would get in the car with him during dismissal time, and we would actually ride along into different areas around different schools and have conversations with business partners in those areas, as well as having conversations with community members. We had multiple conversations with our building leaders, as well as, most importantly, with students, as well as with parents, to hear from young people what they were experiencing during those times. And what we heard repeatedly is that young people felt safe within the school building, but oftentimes, they didn't feel safe traveling from school. And so we also then used that time to report at ComStat so that we could also begin to build a collaborative with city schools, BPD, MOCFS. And then during this school year, we were actually able to implement, based upon the data that we collected, both quantitative and qualitative, identify school-based organizations, excuse me, community-based organizations to support the work, with really focusing in on monitoring the students' walking paths, the commuter, commuter transit stops at the end of each school day for full implementation of Safe Passage. I want to be able to really point out what the collaborative looked like. So the collaborative is Baltimore City Schools Police, as well as school leadership, which is district level, as well as school-based level, Deputy Jones, Deputy Chief Jones, as well as Deputy Chief at one time, Brown, as well as we heard from Sarah Ritter, because it's really around also those community officers as well, and then MOCFS. I also want to call out that moving forward, we will be including Monti, because you'll hear later in this presentation that some of the schools that have been identified are also school-based violence intervention schools, and how the collaborative will expand. And so some of our partners, the community-based partners that have been included to be able to support this work are the Movement Team, Yala, Peace Team, We Are Us, and Redesigning Minds. And then also further in this presentation, you will see where each of these teams are supporting the work and at which schools. Our reporting structure is that the Safe Passage community partners submit timely incident reports, and I want to call out what the incident reports may be. If there is an incident that takes place in the community that rises to the level where there is involvement with school police or BPD, there is a report that is then, we come together as a collaborative, the school police will submit that report, it is then also shared with BPD, and the school leadership also receives that report, as well as any other partner that we need to make sure has that information. They all send in monthly reports to talk about engagement, resources that were shared with that family and any, with that young person, and any additional resources that the family may need. It's also shared with the collaborative and as well as with Monti. Our measures of success that we are focusing on is a reduction in resident and business calls as it's related to students. And so, again, this is about young people feeling safe, traveling from school, but it's also really about building relationships with community members, as well as with businesses, because we were very intentional to make sure that we met with community members so they knew who our Safe Passage community partners were. Each of them have one orange vest that says Safe Passage. We made sure that the business partners knew who they were and that they can identify these community partners to be able to say, hey, we saw this young person, you know, in our, our, our front porch, can we, can you connect with them? And also making sure we're connecting with the school leader. An increase in student attendance, and we have that as a measure of success because we heard repeatedly from parents, from school leaders, from young people to say that they were not coming to school consistently because they did not feel safe in the walking spaces, not necess, not in school, but actually in the walking spaces. And then a decrease in incidence of violence within that two-mile radius, again, based upon the data that we received from last school year. Our touchpoints really are the ad hoc check-ins with the collaborative and Monti, and we have had already multiple ad hoc check-ins with school administration, as well as with BPD and school police, and we have our school police partners here, so I want to give them a chance also to be able to speak. But then also monthly check-ins with our community partners, and then also quarterly meetings with the collaborative, as well as with Monti, and then more broadly during our youth stat. So during youth stat, which has, which includes Health Department, Monti, Baltimore City, Wreckin' Parks, city schools, BPD, state's attorney, and DJS are also all part of youth So our safety zones, again, are based upon incident data. We have the following schools that have been identified, and again, this is in collaboration with the collaborative, BPD, and city schools. The schools where you see the asterisk are also schools that are, and you'll hear more about this, schools that are also school-based violence intervention schools. And the great piece about this and around the partnership is that these schools with these partners are partners that are also both inside as well as outside. So the communication, if there's an incident that takes place within the school, they're able to communicate that so that all partners are on the same page and able to respond accordingly. But these are the schools that have been identified. So ACE, We Are Us, is the partner that's supporting that school. For Carver and Digital, the Movement Team. For Edmondson, Westside High School, it's Yala. For Frederick Douglass, it's also, which is at Northwestern High School, is also Yala. For Mervo, it's Peace Team. And for, we call it the Northern Campus, it's actually Reginald F. Lewis Achievement and Success, which is the Peace Team. And then for Patterson High School, it's Redesigning Minds. This slide really breaks down where those actually safe zones are, where we have, again, partnered with school police, as well as the community partners and BPD for those neighborhood community officers. So you'll see Safe Passage, school police, the neighborhood community officers in these designated areas, along with school staff. And again, it's not to police our young people, but so that our young people know that they can be safe, traveling, but also so that it's a deterrent, so that they know not to engage in any type of, that could possibly be inappropriate behavior. And I'm gonna ask if Major Coleman and, okay, or Chief Shorter would like to come up?
All right.
Good afternoon, Jeffrey Shorter, Chief of Baltimore City Public Schools. Thank you for having us. What I've done is I looked at the qualitative versus quantitative data, and data is great, right? We all need data to proceed and give us our strategic plans. So in my job, in my two weeks, right, I've gone out to develop the qualitative data. I've gone out and inspected the zones, talked to the people on ground, the, you know, their view of what they see, trying to look at it from their lens, talked to some of the students about how they felt about, you know, this new measure that we put in place to ensure their safety. So going forward, I'll continue to do that, inspect these zones, because like, you know, with BPD, you inspect what you expect, right? And we've done, I've done that, my officers do that on their patrols. I'm well familiar with most of the groups that we have assigned to these zones. I worked with them in a community-based capacity for years, so I'm well familiar with them, and they do a great job even before this program was enacted. Questions?
Welcome back. Welcome back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm excited to see you, Deputy Chief.
Looking forward to working with you in the new capacity. I'll open up for questions. I have a bunch. First, do we have that data from the first year of the program?
So this is the first year.
This is the first year.
This is the first year. What we did was we used data that we received from OPI to actually inform where we were going to make sure that we had the, the schools and where we would have the locations. So we use that data to inform how we would fully implement this year.
Got it. So we use data to determine where we were gonna focus.
Exactly, yes.
And with regard to our sort of outcome metrics, our goals, the things that we're trying to change to show us our success with the program, have we begun measuring those things yet?
So, yeah, so we've been in, it's been two weeks since the school year started. So we started, we started the first day of school.
All right. I was gonna ask for the data. I still want to see the data, but.
That's fine. That's fine. So, yes, so what we are, actually are doing as well is that's why we're collecting monthly reports, as well as doing the check-in. So just as Chief Shorter said, our staff has also been out to, to the schools. I saw, I saw Councilwoman Ramos at one of the schools, but we're also doing, we go out during dismissal to also check in. And so we are still, we are collecting that data to see, but also to see if we need to pivot, to just be very transparent, to see if we also need to have before school, to see if there's any incidents that are taking place before school starts, and to collect any data around both quantitative and qualitative data, around if there's any incidents that are hindering young people from coming to school because of any incidents that take place on their route to school.
Yeah. Really, really happy to hear about this program. I think it makes a lot of sense to do, and because we have historically seen issues in this sort of, primarily after school, but I guess sometimes before school as well, and because I know I was a knucklehead when I was a kid as well, and I was causing trouble after school, not that bad, though. You know, I know this is necessary to just have that additional. You know, I know this is necessary to just have that additional supervision and sort of eyes on the street is really, really important. To that end, I'm really curious how we are coordinating with communities around the school. You know, I think there, as I think about schools, we don't have direct control over schools, and that's okay, but we can be a really strong partner. And, you know, my office, my council office thinks a lot about how our communities and schools work in concert and how our office can support there. How have you guys thought about the relationship with the communities and how to connect the two to help as additional eyes on the street or partners or that proverbial village to raise a child?
So, great question. We have reached out and with MOKA so that we can get all of the community association meetings, so that we can also share this information. This is where we are, because we also want the community to know when you see these men and women in these orange vests, this is who they are. They are here to build relationships, also to change perceptions. Because many times they'll say, we saw those kids from this school doing this. And it's not necessarily those kids from this school. It could be young people that are coming back home from another school. So also sharing that information. We've been really intentional about going out and going to back-to-school nights. So there's been a list of back-to-school nights that we have attended so that we could also share that information at back-to-school nights. We're also very cognizant that elementary back-to-school nights look very different than high school back-to-school nights. So just finding different ways to be able to share this information out so that communities are aware of what's going on. I'll give one example. So because Douglas is at Northwestern, we visited Fall Staff, which is across the street. And we'll be attending their back-to-school night so that those families are also aware that when you see someone in an orange vest, this is who is there. They're there to make sure all young people are safe that are traveling to and fro, well, from school right now. But again, just really trying to be intentional about getting this information out.
Yeah. And last question before I hand off to my colleagues, if you guys have questions. We're currently, we just kicked off the program. We're working in eight schools. I don't know how many schools we have across the city, but it's a lot more than eight. And I can tell you, how many? 180. So we'll work our way there. I can tell you personally from my district, in the last school year, we had issues around school let out, and this is elementary, middle school in particular, where former students were coming back to kind of hang out after school, and they, you know, get into trouble. They were disrespectful to folks in the neighborhood, things like that. And I feel like a program like this or something like a lighter version of this might even be helpful in addressing some of those issues. That same school has had issues with young people coming back stealing cars out of the school parking lot, and also unfortunately had a student hit as kids, teens, were kind of driving quickly around the school and hit a young girl. So I know this, this kind of programming is really important and could be helpful in other schools across the city, and it's not just our high schools. I'm curious how we're thinking about that component and if there are lighter versions of this program or small components of this program that may not necessarily require, you know, three or four community partners to be at the table, literally standing on corners. Have you guys thought much about that component?
So you must have been in our office this morning.
I was not in your office.
Because my chief of staff, my chief of staff said this question is going to come up. And so I'll start and I'll let her finish, but we did talk about, begin to look at grants to be able to take this to scale, because we knew that this does happen, not just in high schools, but across our schools, and working closely with our City Schools partner and our, our BPD's partner and MONCIE to see how we can write a grant to scale this. Because again, you're absolutely correct. It does happen. It could possibly happen across all schools, depending, that's not just high schools.
Yeah. I think, before you answer, I think one of the things we do have to look at is how do we equip our communities to be partners in this issue? They are often frustrated, but I do think there's way, there are ways to integrate them into our solutions, whether it's eyes on the street, having them. But we can have that conversation later. Please, go ahead.
No, just adding to that, as you're saying, getting our community involved. So we have spoken with our communications team around how are we messaging this out publicly to our community. A lot of times we, and then one of our measures of this is we want a reduction in calls to the schools and to BPD around what the young people are doing, and when they see someone in an orange vest, talk to them, you know. And the people that we have in there, these are professionals. The community-based organizations are professionals, not only in youth development, but community development. There are, a lot of them are already living and working in the communities where they're serving for this program. So they know how to work with not only the young people, but the community members. And so that is something that we're trying to plan to build up on, how do we engage the community in this more, because we have a lot of organizations in Baltimore City, but we know that the capacity and the man strength of each organization can be limited. So as we think about scaling this and rolling this out to other schools, we're going to be tapping on the same organizations we're currently using, looking into new organizations, but we want to make sure that it's not just them alone, that they are incorporating the community into their planning as well. And so that's something that we're, first of all, working on how we're going to communicate this program to the community and letting them know that the Safe Passage workers are their partners, first and foremost, even before they run into the schools or onto BPD.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I look forward to, maybe we can have a conversation offline about some of the issues I've seen in my district. And if you guys have any suggestions or advice on how to manage those issues, I would love to have a further conversation. To that end, I'll start on this end again, and we'll work our way down. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Brooks, Director Mavronis. Congratulations, Chief Shorter. Glad to see you in this role. I really like this program as well. I think it addresses a very specific need that many of us experience in our communities, that our young people experience. I particularly love the, as I was reading through it, the part about the pure ambassadors and having young people participate in that kind of way and have voice in shaping it and just a smart, trauma-informed approach. What this leads me to think about is some of the lack of safety our young people experience navigating our transportation system on the way to school. We have not great public transportation, particularly for our children. It can take kids an hour and a half, as you know, as a former principal, to get to school on time. We, you know, other than children that are homeless or in special ed, we don't have transportation for them, and so they have to navigate MTA. And I remember a couple of years ago, I think the Fund for Educational Excellence did a survey and did a whole report on lack of safety for kids at bus stops and other transit hubs. I'm curious, I think this is a great place to start in terms of like walking to and from and away from school, but I am curious, any thoughts on thinking about some of the safety challenges that our children experience traversing the whole city to get to school or getting home, sometimes at night after activities? Because I know that's a challenge for a lot of our young people.
It's a great question. I'm going to ask my partners to join us, because that is something that we, we did talk about, especially the, after events like football games or basketball games or things of that nature.
What I've done is I looked at the deployment schedule that we have around the bell schedules. And I'm in the process of creating a midday shift, which will consist 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM, which will give us additional officers, an additional four hours after school on top of this. I'm in the process of filling some vacant positions, using what we have, moving people around. So it's, the structure of school police right now needs to be reworked. So I looked at that, like the data that we've, that I've seen, you know, even coming from BPD, how these incidents occur, school gets off somewhere anywhere from 2:50 to 4 o'clock, somewhere maybe 4:30. So an additional layer of protection and collaboration. I've spoken with the MTA chief in reference to giving us more deployment or resources, or I call them tentacles, around the bus stops. Talked to Deputy Commissioner Jones in reference to how can the schools assist us, because they have that mid-shift roll call or end of shift around 3 o'clock. So that's a critical area where there's not many police on the street from that two to four timeframe. So creating a mid-shift will give me anywhere from four to six officers. I mean, it's not a lot, but if we can have them out around the streets around those bus stops or prime areas where data shows incidents have occurred, I believe that will help out, especially with the football games. Like the, the football games are now, but then you have the basketball game. So it gets a little later, gets dark earlier. So keep that in mind. The deployment strategies will mimic whatever it is the crime dictates.
I appreciate that, and it may be worth, as I mentioned, checking in with, there was a whole report about this by the Fund for Educational Excellence about safety concerns, dealing with public transportation for kids getting to and from school. And it's, I don't know that we ever necessarily did anything with that report, but it may be worth just reaching out to those folks as you're thinking about deployment. But appreciate that you are cognizant of that challenge. My next question, unless...
I just wanted to ask a question tied to that. Does the Safe Routes to School program still exist? Safe routes to school?
That's the first time I heard of that, but I will say in the Northeast, we used to have with the community partners, and my plan is to make it out to these community meetings as well, to reintroduce myself, as well as find out there's some concerns. But Iya, I think it was called, I used to have called a walking school bus.
Yeah.
And I participated in that. And so, so the village concept is important, because when the village goes out to ensure that the kids get back forth to school, grandma on her sitting on the porch, she will know, no, he doesn't go to Dunbar, he goes to Mervau. And once you develop and redevelop those relationships with school police, also create, plan to create a community outreach officer, both civilian and sworn, to just be the bridge builder that school police should be, have been, and can be. So there's some things that I want to put in place, just to bring back that officer-friendly nature and that mindset that people ask for, right? So BPD is strapped, right? You can only ask them to do but so much. But I, I don't, I'm not sure if that program still exists, but...
So Safe Routes to School was a program with the, with the Department of Transportation. And essentially, they were looking at how young people get to and from school, and they would look at infrastructure along the way and make sure that there were safe routes to school. So primarily was focused around foot traffic, but I would imagine it would be very sensible for them to think about public transit as well. But to that effect, Dr. Brooks, you may want to have a conversation. It's relevant. It broadens your scope, but with the OT to see if they still have that program, if they can be helpful in addressing some of this stuff.
Thank you. I wrote it down.
I'm sorry. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just sort of building off of what you said about the village and having grandma looking out and knowing who's supposed to be where. I think interesting opportunity to engage around intergenerational with this. Like I would, Director Brooks, think about, are there some ways that we could pull in the new Office of Aging for Baltimore? And, you know, because I think there are a lot of grandparents in our city that want to be part of the solution with young people, and there is some fear and consternation and frustration, but overwhelmingly, what I hear is like, where's the community involvement, whether it's within schools, whether it's outside of schools. I just think it'd be interesting to have some older adults, you know, participate in this program as well and be those ambassadors and, you know, help our young people get home safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ramos?
Thank you. I think this is great. We know that, that at least one of my schools is on this list and has absolutely had difficulties after school, so I'm grateful. We also have very active neighbors on that street. That one in particular will come out with her little dog in the morning. So they, I think it's a, they've told me that it's welcome to see people helping out after school. And I think Principal Lawrence, prior to the principal now, had wanted to do something like this, but, you know, we were never really able to get it off the ground because we were going to rely on volunteers. So I think that this is, this is good. Definitely want to advocate for before school. We have a particular issue at Mervau where the kids aren't actually, there's a lot of kids that aren't even making it to school, because they're out in the alleys or they're, you know, some things, they're just not going in. And there's a lot of resources now being put into trying to figure out the best way to make sure that they go in, but I think a trusted partner, somebody that the kids already know and helping them, you know, say, look, let's get into school, let's figure this out, let's do this today, would be, would be really important, I think. So particularly for that school. And so if, I guess the question is, are you planning on expanding? It just started, so you can't even think about expansion right now. I get it. We're excited about this, can you tell? And so want to see it in more schools. Are you thinking, if you're, if you're going to be going into more schools in the next, starting in January, or, you know, you're like, no. Or next year or whatever, you're, I guess it'll just depend on how things go. But we'd love to see, you know, whether the expansion is before school or more schools. How does that, how does that work? And, and what you need from us, right? I mean, we, it's obvious that we can be your advocates as well. And I look forward to coming to visit the people working on the Peace Team at Mervau to talk with them a little bit about what's going on.
Thank you. So, yes, as far as the expansion to before school, we have heard from some of our collaborative partners to include school leadership, to include community, to include school police and BPD around those schools that really do need support in the morning as well. And so we are collecting that data that supports, we need this in the morning as well. So we would not wait until the end of the first quarter or the end of two or three months later, because we know that this is a need. So with that being said, we are very aware of what schools need before school, as well as after school, and we are working diligently to put that in place.
And I appreciate you're using your experience in the school system to, you know, recognize what principals are asking you for and then just doing it. So thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Porter?
Thank you. Director Brooks, how much does this program cost in totality?
I'm going to let my chief of staff, because I do want to, I do want to note that we have really based, again, upon the data, working very closely with the community partners and being very intentional about the community partners. Been able to work closely with Family League.
Good.
To be able to get the, support us with this work. So I will...
And before you answer, it would be helpful, the program in totality and the percentage or the dollar amount that the Family League is putting into this program?
Yes, thank you. So the Family League is doing a transfer of $525,000 for this first year. That is around the cost for the five organizations that we're using, that we're doing. So we have a budget of $500,000 for this first year. We are currently looking into how we're going to get for the next year, because we already know that, of course, we want to get it back online next year and then possibly do an expansion as well.
And with regards to these funds, were these discretionary funds, were these unspent funds, what was the, the nature of these funds from the Family League? Or was this a grant? I'm just trying to understand.
So it was an allocation from their FY21, 25 budget.
Was it unspent or just like an actual allocation, a line item?
So I believe that they had done, I won't speak too deeply on them.
Sure, no worries.
But I believe that they had done, they were taking or reducing their funding for their community school coordinators, correct?
Oh, sorry, ma'am.
No, so that was nice.
We'll get back to you on actually what this is, but it was really around safety and engagement for young people. So they, so with that bucket of money, we were able to reallocate how we're supporting in that way.
So the reason why I ask that, because you know there's a method to my madness. The reason why I ask that is because as you all are preparing your FY25 and 26 budgets, I fully expect that there would be some sort of line item for this program there. My concern is that because the school, I mean, if it is true that this was a reallocation, the Family League does so much great work as it relates to our school community coordinators. And I know that some of them have transitioned to Baltimore City Public Schools. I want to make sure that we're adequately, we're not taking from one to give to another, that this is a truly sustainable method, because as the kids are going to school, we need to make sure that they have Safe Passage to school, the programming. But we also need to make sure that as they are in school, they have the representation, they have the representatives for their school community health.
Yep. So I can say that it did not. So it is not taking away from any of the work So it is not taking away from any of the work that the Family League is doing with our schools without a school time. So it has not removed any of that type of funding for those programs.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that confirmation. Secondly, I want to ask about the data as it relates to the identification of the school zones. How do you all, or what is the, the data-driven approach that you all used to identify those school zones?
I'm going to ask my partner from City Schools to come up.
Thank you.
Because I was in the ride along with him.
Sure. And also, sir, just to add to that question, the overlap of programming within that area, is there, are there multiple initiatives happening at the same time within these respective zones?
Yes, we used a lot of data.
Oh, sorry.
Red, honey, sorry. We used a lot of the data from our call volumes, the amount of calls that we received that during dismissal in those particular areas, and the amount of students that we had transitioning through those areas. We looked at the bus hubs, then we looked at the amount of calls that we received for foot traffic. That was one of the reasons why I talked to Dr. Brooks about, about implementing as walking instead of just at a bus stop.
Okay.
Because at bus stops, we had five or six officers assigned there. However, if we strategically placed those officers throughout the city and be able to respond to situations where kids were walking, that would be more effective.
And is that call volume from 911, 311, or simply...
A lot of it came through the school police.
Through school police.
Call center as well as just calling to our office and from administration calling for where they needed assistance at.
Okay. I'm going to save my last question for the next round, sir.
All right, we're going to move on to Monty, if you can ask.
So I'll continue to ask the question, sir. I'm sorry. No worries. What is the, what is the geographic kind of area that, that you all receive those calls? So for example, I noticed that you have Digital Harbor here for South Baltimore, but Benjamin Franklin. How are you all kind of moving from these particular hubs throughout the neighborhood? So you're, I want to make sure that you catch all the high schools and the middle schools that, so it's not necessarily just high schools, but like all the schools in the area.
We don't, we can't catch all of them because of the manpower issues that we're experiencing. However, but we receive in calls down to digital, that particular area down by Light Street. And we were receiving a lot of calls from, is that Maria D's and that, and the stores in that area about concerns with the students as they went through that community and from some of the community members as well. So that's why we kind of focused on that area. We focused on 36 and Falls Road, the, a lot of the stores there as well as some of the residents there. And of course, in the Mervo area.
Are you able to share that quantitative data with the council?
No, we have, we can do that. We can try to, we can try to pull like...
Okay. Yeah, and particularly, I'd like to see call volume because what I am looking at is the overlay of the issues that we are experiencing which is within each of our councilmatic districts, but also the call volume that you are receiving as well.
Okay.
And Dr. Brooks, I would also just implore you, if there can be some sort of connection to 311, most residents, we, you know, they call us and we tell them to call 311. So it's not necessarily the connection to school, school police, it's the connection to 311 and having that be the senses of how the geographic region is aligned for the programming.
Again, all of the calls do not come through 311 or 911, such as I know that there's a apartment building, complex right in your area.
Yep, terra firma.
That came right through the school to our office and we had officers address that.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and to that respect, it's just important because not every community member has a school police number.
Correct.
They have the 311 or the 911 number. So it's just overlaying the data so that we get an accurate picture of what's happening. The last question that I have, and this is the last one, Dr. Brooks, how are you measuring success of this program? Is it community engagement? Is it touches? How are you all measuring success?
So we have a few points that we're looking at. Definitely a decrease in the number of resident and business calls for service-related to students. So again, the calls that are going to school police, calls that are going to BPD, calls we will now check with 311 so that we can do year over year. Increase in student attendance because we heard from school leaders as well as parents and young people that they were, their attendance was sporadic because they did not feel safe traveling to and from. They were safe once they were in the building, but it was that, that before and or after school.
And my sincerest apologies, it's in the presentation, you don't even got to go further. I wasn't here for that portion. How are you all dealing with the capacity issues with MOCFS? This is such a large, a large undertaking, and I know with eviction prevention, you all are doing a great job with that. I wanted, I wanted to just ask from a capacity perspective, how are you all managing this? And what does that look like in the next budget cycle for additional personnel, additional collaboration, or even possibly a transition of programming into other agencies that could take lead?
So what I do want to say is that the collaboration with BPD and City Schools has really helped this not be such a huge lift. That because, and I tell people all the time, I'm not law enforcement, but the collaboration and also with Monty. So with Monty, Monty really is the lead on the school-based violence intervention program. And so they will also now really be part of the collaborative work with four of the schools that we have identified as being, having the same partners, both inside the school as well as outside of the school. So we will be able to really work collaboratively around this work as well. We were prepared for questions about expansion and what that will look like. So I can't speak to what, how much more staff we would need to be able to support this work, but what I will say is that we were prepared to begin to look for grants, to be also to be able to support this work. Because in full transparency, other principals have reached out because they've heard that there is, you know, safe passage support at these schools and they would like to see it at their schools as well.
And then also, just making a point to collaborate with DOT as well, traffic safety of kids' cars and C is a major issue that we're seeing. And I know Councilman Cohen, you've brought it up, Councilwoman Ramos has brought it up. And so just want to make sure that DOT is also at the table.
Thank you. We've noted that.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our final presentation for the day. Director Mefronis, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Chair and members of the committee. I'm joined here today by Monty's Chief of Staff, Chanelle White, who has been playing a role in the implementation of this work. But we're here today to provide a comprehensive update on where we stand with the school-based violence intervention pilot program. So we'll talk a little bit about the program model and then also the implementation status at all four schools. The schools that we are implementing in, Mervo, Carver, Digital Harbor and Edmondson West Side. And we'll also share a little bit about the ways that we'll be measuring this work as we continue to embark in the school year. So school-based violence intervention is situated within the context of what the mayor has termed the community violence intervention ecosystem. You can see where this fits in here. This is a distinct program, a completely distinct program, distinct staff, distinct partners. But it does involve intervention, mediation and elements of outreach. And so looking at just some of the scope of this work, the goal is really to build student skills and self-awareness, self-regulation and nonviolent conflict resolution within the school building. There's an element of this work that involves intervention and mediations. There's also an element of this work that involves strong relationship building and community outreach to ensure that students identified as being at the potentially highest risk for engaging in violence or becoming a victim of violence are able to get that direct support within the school. And so we'll be doing a number of trainings in partnership with our partners here, activities to engage this population. And of course, doing all of this in strong coordination and collaboration with City Schools and our school leaders. Did I mention the schools? All right. We've shared a little bit of this before, but I'll cover it briefly again. The pilot schools were selected in a few different ways. We started by looking at the data, understanding where violence was being reported, understanding school demographics and school performance data, incidents occurring close to and within school buildings, and also proximity and connectivity to our existing CBI programs. We see this as, as being a part of our community violence intervention ecosystem. This initiative can benefit from all of the other wraparound services and supports that Monty is connected to in this work. And so I think this, everything you just heard from Dr. Brooks and our partners at Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, I think goes into this very nicely. We understand that our students are traveling from all different neighborhoods to come to our schools. They're traversing lots of different pathways, conflicts that may start outside of the school in the community can very quickly lead to conflicts within the school building and vice versa. And so we want to make sure that we are learning things through this pilot that allow us to prevent and intervene in violence before it occurs. So as I mentioned, this is a partnership between city government, the school system, our local school communities, the community-based partners who I'll talk about in just a moment, and our students. We know every single one of the schools, we probably couldn't have picked four more different schools across our city. Each of them have different school populations, each of them have different neighborhood dynamics and school dynamics. And so we understand that this design will have to be very tailored and adapted to each of those particular school climates. All right. So this slide outlines some of the activities for what the intervention specialists who are within the schools will be doing. These intervention specialists, and I'll go into this in more detail in just a moment, they are employed by contracted community-based partners. They will be doing the work of identifying student ambassadors who will serve as kind of credible peer communicators and working closely as a part of this program. They will be doing interventions and mediations. They will be counseling students who are engaged as high-risk and working collaboratively with other community violence intervention partners. They will also be providing enrichment activities for youth and training students to make sure we're really expanding the skill set around healthy conflict resolution. And so in each one of our four pilot schools, this is what the staffing model looks like. We have one program supervisor per school, two intervention specialists per school who report to that program supervisor, and then two student ambassadors per grade level. Again, this is high school, so we're anticipating eight students ambassadors for each one of our school installations. One thing that I will point out, just because of the terminology, when we're talking about intervention specialists inside of our schools, I know in the school system, there's already some positions that are kind of interventionist in nature. When we're talking about intervention in the context of the school-based program, we're talking specifically about not intervening in, you know, making sure students are clearing out from the hall, but really making sure that these are the individuals who are addressing instances of violence, who are taking action when they hear about something that is likely to happen in that realm and able to step in and intervene and change the temperature of those situations where they occur. This is just some more information about what each of those roles does, but I will move ahead. I think I've already covered this. Okay, let's move on to implementation status. We have some wins to share and then could talk a little bit about the current implementation. I'll actually start on the right-hand part of this slide. Of our four schools, we're really happy to share that all four schools and in partnership with the principals and the school system have selected the community-based partners that they want to work with. The movement team will be providing this work in Carver and Digital Harbor. Youth Ambassador Leadership Academy has been selected for Edmondson West Side and the Peace Team has been selected as a partner at Mervo. So again, underscoring what you heard from Dr. Brooks, there's a lot of synergy here amongst the partners, the understanding of the school community, and most importantly, building those trusted quality relationships with the individuals who are staffing this initiative. We have completed program design. We have secured a little over 1.1 million in funding for program launch over this pilot period. We're continuing to pursue additional grant opportunities. One really important component of this, I mentioned youth ambassadors, these are roles that are stipended roles for our students. And so that's one of the things that this funding will be used for. The National League of Cities is one of our key partners, both as a funder and a technical assistance provider here. And we've been working very closely with City Schools and the Office of Whole Child Services. We were launched on day one in Digital Harbor and Carver with the movement team. They've been very effective partners. One additional thing here is that three of the four schools sort of welcomed officially new principals, and so we had to make sure we were working very closely in that transition. Also, very importantly, we have executed an MOU with City Schools for this work, solidifying our partnership and making sure that roles and responsibilities are clear between the school system, the mayor's office, our community-based providers and the school-based leadership. And so as far as anticipated timeline, between now, sorry, between now and the end of this calendar year, we're looking at full program implementation. This is new work. It's going to be an iterative process, but we're going to be working very aggressively to make sure that this is stood up. Selecting our youth ambassadors between now and the end of this year, finalizing the contracts with the specific CBOs now that we have the MOU with City Schools completed, and beginning the process of referrals and resource coordination. Then next year, we'll be really going into that peer leadership training, launching youth development opportunities and continuing our work as a partner and monitor of this. Many of the collaborative partners you heard from Dr. Brooks will inherently be engaged in this work too, and it's our commitment to make sure that we have strong communication so that anything that may happen inside or outside the school, or even any information that we get from a community-based provider about conflicts involving school students implicating one of these four pilot schools, that we're able to have that seamless communication. These are some of the metrics that we'll be collecting. We've been spending a lot of time with City Schools and our principals, understanding the best way for us to get good data on this. We know that it's sensitive data. We're talking in many cases about minors, and so it's important that we do this in the right way. But we will be having our community-based providers collect information about mediations, those who are involved, how those are being resolved, which ones have been referred to other service providers, and then that additional level of case management and resource referral from support with food to mental health, academic support and job readiness. Similarly, we will have kind of monthly and quarterly reporting on this data and also will complete annual evaluations to understand the successes and the opportunities for improvement as we continue on. Happy with that to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Mefronis. I, um, this is another program I was really looking forward to. One noting how it sort of mirrors in many ways Safe Streets and its methodology, violence intervention, focus on young people in our schools and outside of our schools as well. One of the things that I was curious about in it sort of mirroring many of the components of Safe Streets is that sort of credible messenger component, where with Safe Streets, you have someone who is a credible messenger, who essentially steps between two folks who are having issues, conflict. When we, when we think about that for schools, I would imagine that, that credible messenger would look different, you know? So I'm curious, how are we thinking about that piece and how do we sort of identify credible messengers?
Great question, and it's something we've discussed very closely with City Schools. I want to state clearly, this is not Safe Streets in the schools when you think about what Safe Streets does. We need individuals who have credibility at a broader community level. So they're, you know, literally out there walking the streets, having a different kind of conversation with individuals who are outside. When we're talking about our school students, that's a different kind of credibility. And so all of the principals we've spoken with have been very adamant and intentional about the partners that they want to engage as a part of this work. In some cases, the individuals that are needed. I'll share in the case of Digital Harbor, we know we have a school with a strong Spanish-speaking population. We needed interventionists and staff who could engage with that population directly and in the native language. And so that's one of the things that we've been tailored there. But I would like to invite Chief of Staff White to share a little bit more about how we're thinking about that in the fine grain of the implementation.
So in our conversations with school principals and administration, it was very important that we identify CBOs who had a connection to the school, who came recommended by the community members themselves. who came recommended by the community members themselves, based on the work that they had done, referral sources and things like that, as we continue to grow this pilot program in identifying those student ambassadors. And I think that's the piece that will mirror Safe Streets credible messengers, identifying those students who are able to make those connections to other students to kind of get those, to get them to take their lead in things. We don't know what that looks like as of yet because the school year has just started. But the CBOs who are in place and the administration staff, principal staff, and who are in place are identifying those students now. So our next step will be to engage with their parents, to explain to them the program model, what, how it works, how their child will be playing an instrumental part in not resolving the conflicts, but even kind of just setting an example based on how you should act in class, how you should act in the hallway, what you should do when you're leaving school, when you're exiting school, just modeling themselves in a way that others will inherently follow. Based on that student's personality directive, they may not be the A student. It could be the student who just is well-known, well-liked, and is able to get other people to follow their direction. And it will look different in each school.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you guys thinking about it. Because as I was preparing for this meeting, it was one of the conversations I was sort of having, you know, how do you make that work? You know, for Safe Streets, these are folks who are on the streets. And we certainly, we want that credibility, but we don't necessarily want folks who are on the streets in our schools necessarily doing this program. But sometimes, the severity of the issues that we're seeing with our young people do get to that level. And so, we need someone with that sort of adaptability. So as I was thinking more and more about that, I'm like, you know, growing up, like, who did I look up to and who did I trust enough to sort of confide in? And, you know, coaches or things like that. But, you know, as you guys are thinking about, you know, expanding the program, rolling it out in other schools, you know, it might be worth trying different types in order to make sure that we find the right one. But that was just a curiosity of mine. The other piece, my second question before I hand off to my colleagues, was about the schools that we're in so far and the schools that we are not in. Do we have a sense of our timeline? We're currently operating as the beginning of the school year in two schools. What two schools are those?
Digital Harbor and Carver. And the movement team, the movement team is the contracted provider in both. For the other two schools, the Peace Team in MIRVO and Yala in Edmondson Westside, we have staff who are right now going through the background process with Baltimore City Schools. So we expect as soon as we get the clearance on those staff, they will be operational in the schools, but they're ready to go. And we've had some conversations already to set the table with those school communities and principals.
Got it. So we would maybe, for both of the schools, they're in the same sort of timeline?
We expect by the end of this month. So for, I think that'll give us enough time to finish the background clearing process. If we need to move on to any second round of candidates, we'll have time to do that. But we are ready to go on that level.
Excellent.
And I think that the half of the staff have been identified and were cleared were already in city schools. So it was identifying those other pieces. We don't want to start any school with less than two people in position to serve out of those three roles. Currently, there was one who was cleared for MIRVO and for Yala, I think it was also one. So we're just waiting on the other two individuals at each school for their background checks to come back. And I believe as of Monday, all had been processed. We're just waiting on the report.
Got it. So they're, it's the hiring process effectively?
Correct.
And for this program, are these city employees or they are part of? Okay, so who, who's?
They're community-based organization employees. So they're not, some were former city employees in city schools who also, I guess, on the weekends, whatever, worked with the CBOs and then were transitioning into full-time roles within the CBO organization. So that's why we didn't have to go through the clearance process because they were already cleared through city school.
Got it.
But they'll be employed by those same organizations that you saw listed for each of the four schools.
Got it. That makes a lot of sense. Seems like a stupid question now. Thank you. I'm going to hand off to Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Mavronis. Really like where I think this program is headed. The one thing I'd like to see in addition, I see conversation about mediation and mental health and we'd love to see restorative practices incorporated into this work. I think it's, again, something that city schools has done really, really well in some cases and it's a part of our city's culture that I would love to see spread and as we are thinking about, you know, this type of pretty intensive public safety programming in our schools, I think, building off of successful models that we've done in the past and will hopefully do again. It's really important. So I would just, again, flag and lift up restorative practices as part of the conflict resolution, as part of the mental health support, trauma-informed, all these things. Like, I think we have some really good models in some schools that are doing it extremely well. And I want to see all of our schools utilizing restorative practices within the next few years.
Suggestion taken. I mean, I would say there's already some synergy that exists there. I think one thing that is clear, there are lots of resources within our school buildings. And it's important that with an initiative like this, that has different players at the table, including the mayor's office, that whatever we're putting in place is integrated with what the, what the school has in place. So for, we've talked to some of our principals about the ways that even just as far as the space allocation for this initiative, how they can build on some of what's already in place as a part of that restorative work. But that's something that as we continue to forge ahead in implementation, we can draw the connection with.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman and Councilwoman. I have a couple more questions. So I'm going to actually steal Councilwoman Porter's question from the previous program. I appreciate it. Thank you. I'm curious, as you guys think about your goals, your metrics, how you're going to measure success for the program, how do we know if it is or is not working? Once again, I think while this is somewhat, and I keep saying this loosely, a mirror of Safe Streets, the outcomes will look different for young people. The outcomes will look different in schools and out of schools. And so, I was looking forward in your presentation, and it's, we have some metrics that show us how much we're doing, but I don't see much here to tell us how well we're doing and whether or not we're actually benefiting young people. And so, I'm curious if you thought much about that, and if not, I have some ideas, but we can talk offline about that.
I think just to start, one of our goals would absolutely be to have this pilot independently evaluated. That's something that we'll want to see before we make any decisions about what scale will look like. And we know as far as about the program gets out, more and more schools are like, we'd love to have something like this at our school building. I think for us, we're going to be looking very closely at specifically instances of violence within our school. We don't, we're not talking just about gun violence, but other, like, are we seeing a decrease in fights? Are we seeing, are we seeing the life outcomes and trajectories for those students that we've identified as at the highest risk changing via the referrals that we're able to make? And so, I'm expecting that we're going to want to evaluate that in both quantitative and qualitative ways. Anything else that you want to add?
I think also, how many students are seeking out those CBOs prior to incidents occurring versus trying to resolve it themselves? I think when they have creditable mentors or, or people in place that they know that this is a resource, how many are using that resource ahead of time, proactively instead of reactively?
Yeah. I think there's a lot to gain in focusing by figuring out what those components will be earlier rather than later. Because I think, yeah, I'll leave it there. So I would be more than happy to have a conversation, Director, about what I think some things could be helpful to nail down, suspensions, violence, things like that might, might help, but I have some thoughts there. The other question I had was around, it sounds like the program is going to be like individual-based. Not like, I mean, there's the school, but it sounds like we're going to be focusing on individuals within the school who we, who we think have some proclivity or maybe are going down the wrong, you know, line toward, you know, violence in some way, shape, or form. To that end, I'm curious how we're thinking about, you know, and this comes from the sort of outcomes question, how we're thinking about conflicts between schools? You know, there are kids who have beef with other kids that go to different schools just because they said something nasty on a football field. Or they live in the same neighborhood, but they go to different high schools. So I'm not sure how we sort of keep track of something like that, but I'm curious, have we thought much about that? And if not, you know?
So we have not, but that's a good point that you've brought up. I'm a former educator, so I know like there's typically, like, I'm county educator, so the Woodlawn Ranestown game was a big one. And I think that's something we need to look at as like the city poly game. The other things around the city that are just kind of known, I want to say hot, but just hot events where there's a larger attendance, more probability that something is likely to happen. Not necessarily some, an act of violence, but some sort of argument is even if it's just friendly camaraderie between the schools, just making sure we have a presence there, something we should look at to incorporate in this plan. So we are in the stages of finalizing and creating the CBO agreements with each school. And that will look different for each school. And the principals being involved with it to identify the need that we have not yet known because it's just, we're not in the schools every day. That'll be part of the agreement.
Yeah.
I think communication and coordination is another key piece of this. We have a number of community-based partners in our work who work with students who may attend a couple different schools. It's important that we can know, not just via social media or from an update later on, when there's something happening between our school students. So ideally, if we're hearing about something that's starting in the community, we have an opportunity to intervene prior to that, reaching our school. But I think there's a lot more coordination to go around, as you've heard from today's presentations, a lot more communication that I think will lend itself to us being able to be way more proactive in that realm.
Yeah. And then the last piece, and I think I'm out of questions after this, or at least ones that I ask here, is I know we continue to have issues with young people that don't necessarily include violence, but some of those instabilities often lend themselves towards issues with violence down the line. Got an instance in my district where I've got some young kids, like 11 and 15, who've been really just kind of terrorizing the community, just kind of causing trouble. My worry is that that behavior can lead to something more. And the question I have is, does this program at all consider or think about some of those red flags and indicators for young people who are still in our schools and likely coming in, maybe not regularly, and maybe that's one of your indicators that you want to track, attendance for folks in the program? But how do we, how do we think about those other risk factors outside of violence? Once again, these are, these are young kids who are changing rapidly and maybe haven't made that mistake yet. And I think maybe some of the lessons learned and skills built through some of the stuff that this program will implement could be helpful early on. So just, I'm curious if we thought much about those input factors and deciding who's part of the program?
I think those are, those are some of the very things that when we're thinking about the interventionist, the supervisor who are within the schools, part of their building and that trusting relationship with a young person is also being able to understand where those red flags are. For example, where we've already started this, at the end of the school day, it looks like, you know, daily debriefings about what happened and talking about some of the specific school dynamics. And while this is an individual-focused program, there's a broader element of, this is a community violence intervention program where we are trying to change something about the norms in the school community as a whole. But I think to that end, yes, we're not just looking at students who have already engaged in violence, but we know how those risk factors can, can build on one another.
And I think the CBOs who we've met with and who've been identified to work in the school all have previous school experience. I think I always look back to that poem, "Because I Didn't Have a Pencil." There are other things that cause flags. Like, I think the poem goes something like, "I got to an argument today because I didn't have a pencil." Or, and everything led back to like, this child just had a bad day at school, and then the teacher is mad because he didn't, I can't remember the crux of it. But what are those factors? Is he late because he didn't get food in the morning, so he's stopping at his friend's house? Is he late because he needed to wash his clothes? Is there a washing machine in the school building? Is he afraid to come in because people have laughed at his shoes? Like, what are those factors that we need to identify? What are the resources we can connect them to ahead of time to make it, to make that child more willing to come to school, engage with the counselors who are there, the administration staff that, that are there? And that, so we know what resources we need to implement and who other partners we can bring in to kind of expand the program?
Yeah. I, you know, it's interesting, we don't have, I think broadly, this is not an issue often in urban areas. And that is like massive school shootings where like some kid who'd been brooding for years suddenly decides they're going to wreak havoc on a school. It doesn't really happen here, and knock on wood, hopefully we never experienced that. But I, we do see still that kid who's picked on and finally does react to the bully. And, you know, I think this is a program that can help us, one, find the kid who's getting picked on, and two, find the bully and, you know, bring them together and see if we can work something out or, or whatever else. I'm not sure how the resolution may come to pass. But I'm really interested in seeing how this plays out. I know a big part of, I think the future of the city is dealing with all the traumas and difficulties of being a young person in our schools and in our neighborhoods. And I think this is one way to squarely address some of those pieces. So I'm really curious how things play out, and I hope you guys learn a lot in this, this pilot. So that's all the questions I have. Any other folks have questions before we adjourn? All right. Wonderful. Thank you, Director. Appreciate both of you guys for giving us the insights, and this hearing is in recess.